We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I know Councilman Hendricks is on his way and to try to keep everything on track. We'll go ahead and move things along. I want to welcome everybody here. Thank you so much for taking the time to be here. It does my heart good every time that we've got a good crowd of folks that are here because it means that you guys care about what happens in the county. And we're excited to be here to do the work of the county. If you will, please stand and join me with the invocation and pledge. Most gracious and heavenly Father, thank you so much for the many blessings that you give us here in Pickens County. We take so much for granted and we live in one of the best places in the world to live. We've got beautiful streams and mountains and some of the most extraordinary people on earth, and you bless us with this every day, and sometimes we take that for granted. Lord, I want to thank you for the counsel that's here as each man brings a different strength to the table and the staff of Pickens County and all the employees as they're working to do what they can for the people who live here. We ask that you continue to bless us, help us to make the decisions that are right and fair by the people who live here, and always keeping you at the center of everything that we do. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now hold our public forum. Now, this is the public's opportunity to give feedback to council on issues that you deem important. We appreciate you keeping the time to three minutes. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please call it for our speaker?
Mr. Chairman and members of council, I'll call Franklin Rink.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Been about a month ago now I attended my local rural fire board meeting, which would be the Central Rural Fire District. And I learned a couple of things in that meeting. Helped it kind of bother me a little bit, and I'd go over a couple of those things. First thing I learned that their three minutes to address actually is about two minutes and 15 seconds, and I wasn't real happy about that. That's the second time that the fire chief from City of Central has denied me my rights as a citizen, and that concerns me. And, you know, we, the people, will not tolerate that type of behavior from our public officials. And the second thing that I learned, or that it reiterated to me, I feel like with our contract we have with the City of Central, we're not getting exactly what we're paying for. And I say that, I learned we're, the City of Central added two paid positions through the day, and I learned that the Central Rural Fire District is paying for one of those. And I live four tenths of a mile from the Central Rural Fire District Station, which is across from Daniel High School, and we have our own station, I station some of the best equipment in the county. And what I'm seeing is nobody there throughout the day, and I'm by there three to four times a day. And once or twice a week, maybe, I see somebody there. And I'm wondering, you know, we're paying for this position, and he's sitting down there in the city all day, every day. And I have a hard time with that. If I have an emergency at my house, four tenths of a mile away, am I going to have to wait on them to come from the city, which is five to six miles away? It's just a concern I have, and I just hope that we would look into that contract and they're fixing to sign a contract again to redo the contract, is what I should say, for, I won't say 10 more years. And I understand we can't just drop the contract and get out of it. We've got to work our way out of it. And that's what I addressed. What are we waiting for to start phasing out of it and buying property to start building the extra stations that they're saying that we're needing? We need to move on with that, and possibly the money we're paying, we can get out on our own and not have to deal with the City of Central. Thank you.
Thank you.
I left the last meeting after I spoke because I had to be in easily at seven o'clock. I run a business, sometimes it's 24/7. I didn't run off because I was afraid to hear what you had to say. The scoreboard was clear. The old jail had a chapel for all to see. The new one is not going to have a chapel. You made that decision. It was another battle in the cultural war that they won and we lost, and they didn't even have to fire a shot. Wes, you also said it was under my leadership the school closed. That's untrue, and it's really, the claim is beneath you. In March 2016, Superintendent Danny Merck recommended, and Chairman Judy Edwards, Phil Bowers, Brian Swords, and Herb Cooper, they voted to close Holly Springs and A.R. Lewis. I was in the corner over there voting no as they jammed it down my throat. During that time, I was on the losing side of more five to one votes than you guys will probably ever have. Wes, you got your dates mixed up. In 2011 and 2012, that's when I was the chairman and had a majority behind me. It was four years earlier, and there were no schools that were closed. It would be like saying in four years, when Roy has lost his allies on this council, he's over on the end there, he's losing votes five to one, a new council comes in, a new administrator, a new chairman, and they shut down some department, and you say, hey, Roy, you know, it was under your leadership that they shut down the department. That would be an absolute smear, and that's what you did to me last meeting. Concerning the mistakes in the Dacresville School Board election, one of you is asked, I don't know what Mr. Sater wants us to do. First of all, the knee-jerk response I've heard too often from you guys is, we have no authority, we can't do anything about this election. You have no authority in running the elections. That's true, but you clearly have financial authority over all this. You pay for everything in the elections department, from the salaries to the elections themselves. For instance, if the elections director comes to you and says, give me a billion dollars for my budget, you can tell him no. That's authority. It also says in the law that you have audit and fiscal oversight responsibility over the department. To that end, what you should do is invite the elections director to your hearing and ask him to explain what went wrong, why it went wrong, who is responsible, and what is he changing to actually make sure it doesn't happen again. Then report it all to the public. You know, what government reports to the public are a key ingredient of accountability, and honestly, I'm just not seeing that. If the election director just refuses to show up to your hearing, which he could, just refuse, which I doubt, but if he does, just order the county administrator to do an audit or investigation and have him report back any findings. You all said you were leaders, now you should lead. Sometimes that means cutting a path that others don't realize exists, or sometimes taking a path that other people are afraid to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, disconnect the public forum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Move on to our approval of minutes. I'll ask for a motion approving the minutes for January 3, 2019. We're going to stay in. Motion, Councilman, please, sir. Say, by Councilman Bowles, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. On to number four, administrator's report. Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chairman. Anyways, Mr. Chairman, I got a pretty eye for it. I'm trying to see if you can hear.
First off, I'd like to ask to add a economic development update, Project Providence, to executive session tonight. Project Providence. Yes. Second, I'd like to remind council and staff that government offices will be closed next Monday in order to observe some Martin Luther King holiday. And third, I'd like to ask Mr. Pitts, our tourism director, to step up. He's going to brief council on our grand finale of our 150-year celebration.
Thank you, sir. Happy New Year to all of you guys. If I haven't seen you, to wish you that so far. I wanted to give you a quick update as we continue our 150th celebration, but at the same time start to wind down. I wanted to remind everybody that Mark Wood will be here in April. He is scheduled to appear April the 8th through the 13th. He's bringing his entire education team to teach our young people in the world of music. We began the campaign last April, and then we followed up in August, September by recruiting all of our teachers, who then began recruiting students. Right now in Pickens County, we're at 700-plus students who signed up representing all of our schools, so all schools will be a part of this. And we have six teachers we're waiting to hear from, so we expect those numbers to go up a little bit more than 600, excuse me, a little bit more than 700. We're trying to hold out. I've got 165 students from Oconee County interested, and I'm waiting on Oconee County to give me the green light that they're going to be involved. My plan is to solidify that this week, one way or the other, with Oconee County. We've contracted with Little John Coliseum. The contract came in last week. I've asked our council to review it, and so we're going to sign that contract, hopefully this week, and get that to rest. Lastly, we will unveil and begin kicking off a full marketing campaign for Mark Woods towards the end of this week, but certainly by the first of next week. And it's full speed ahead at this point to make this happen in a big way. There was one question that came up, and I want to nail it head-on. It's the same day as Clemson University's spring game. We're aware of that, we know that. We're going to hopefully use that to our advantage. We looked at possibly moving the week around, but there's just no time to do it. Mark's not available, and the weekends at Little John aren't available. Clemson's on board with us with the contract, so we'll make that happen on the 13th. With that said, that's my report.
What time is this thing going to be that day? Because the spring game's about 12 or 1:00 o'clock.
We're going to do the concert at 7:30.
Okay, so shouldn't be any conflict.
And we scheduled, we were on the phone with Mark today, and what we've done is we've scheduled dress rehearsals in between games, and the kids, once they're there, they're there, and the show starts at 7:30 that night.
You're going to get Dell Gilbert to announce it at the game?
Well, you know, we might. That's a good idea, yeah. So, and we're going to have a host of VIPs that we're inviting to attend, representing from, I guess, the schools. Molly Spearman, is what I'm trying to say. I'm going to invite Molly, several council members who are, several representatives on the education committee. We're going to have the governor hopefully here, so we're going to make it a big deal and a big way to end our 150th celebration. Any other questions? Hopefully, everybody in the room will join us. We're looking forward to it. Thank you.
We'd like to entertain your questions, Councilman.
Do you have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Cool, thank you. Mr. Wilson, was that all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. Our committee report, we don't have any at this time, under council correspondence. I don't have anything to report. Does anybody else on council have anything to report? No?
Myself and Councilman Hudson attended the delegation annual meeting earlier. I guess that was last week. And the common theme in the room was unfunded mandates and fully funding local government fund. I think that was heard, as always. We, as council, got up and kind of pushed that topic as well. So, short of that, that's what I gathered from that meeting Monday night.
All right. Anything else?
I think, we were talking about, I think the plan for them is to make the current funding level the new 100% funded. So, in other words, we're being funded at a reduced level, but I think they're going to change the law to make the level that they're funding us down 100%, which is bad because we're not going to get the money we're supposed to get. But it's going to show it like we're getting it on paper, but it's not. It's, so I don't see that changing.
Did they talk about reducing any responsibilities?
Well, you know better than that.
Hey, there's always a chance.
The truth is, just what this is, is to fund us, they would have to raise taxes. And they don't want to raise taxes, but they won't count the taxes raised on county council, on county level. That's what it's all about. And it's playing with numbers and changing the law to make that happen.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I'll now take us to item number seven. We're entering into a motion period in new business. Does any member have any motions at this time?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to add Project Providence to executive session.
Motion to add Project Providence to executive session. Is there any?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and motion carries. Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we recognize our firefighters and public servants. I have some certificates here. I guess this would be the appropriate time to do that.
This would be the perfect time to do that. Let's, I'd like to conduct council to come down front.
Please vote on this first, since it's a motion.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's go ahead and do the vote first. So, the motion is made to, on, go ahead, say it.
I'll make the motion to recognize our firefighters and public servants, recognize firefighters, public service of the year, various awards.
Second. Second by Councilman Hendricks. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. If you guys will join me down here. As I read these names, if you're present, please come forward. With Crosswell Firefighter of the Year is Jeremy Pilgrim. Dacresville Fire Officer of the Year, Captain Mitch Harden. Dacresville Firefighter of the Year, Jimmy Ganey. Holly Springs Firefighter of the Year, Mike Staten. Liberty Firefighter of the Year, Joey Freeman, Lieutenant Joey Freeman, apologize, Lieutenant. And Volunteer of the Year, Kevin Campbell. Pickens Rural Firefighter, Michael Waters. Pumpkin Town Firefighter of the Year, Jonathan Neely and Grant Robinson. Shady Grove Firefighter of the Year, Captain Justin Howard. Six Mile Firefighter of the Year, Lieutenant Kendall Rampy. Vineyards Firefighter of the Year, Lieutenant Jimmy Wyatt. Pickens County EMT of the Year, Paramedic Field Training Officer Tommy Page. Pickens County Sheriff's Officer of the Year, Sergeant Chris Sullivan. And the 2018 Billy Wilkins Award for Excellence in Law Enforcement winner was Chief Deputy Gentlemen, thank you for what you do for Pickens County. (APPLAUSE). Let's get these guys to come up here. We'll go back behind them there and let's get a picture. That will be necessary to follow the report, isn't it? White hole. Okay, great. All right. All right, we'll move on to item number eight. Consideration of the Renewal of Fire District Services Contract Between Central Rural Fire District and Town of Central. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, sir. This is a request from the Central Rural Fire District, Town of Central, for a new executive contract for another five years. This contract is the same that was prior to this contract. The only difference is we updated the ordinance number, and we also changed it from 10 years to five years, and there's an out clause there now, so it allows us to get out within a year at any point during the agreement. We're going to build all fire stations, we can get out within a year's time.
And that's 180-day notice.
180-day notice is what we have to give. This comes in preparation from the Central Rural Fire Board.
Any other questions for Mr. Wilson?
There's a question about that man that we're paying for there. Is that supposed to be a man stationed? Can we follow up on that?
Actually, we already followed up. I sent a text message just now. We think it's part of that to be a contract price. I'm not 100% sure yet. I did send a text message.
Is there a way for us to verify that's happening? Because, you know, that is our building, but their contract that we use it, so.
I'm going to verify if we are paying for it or not. I probably will have answers to that.
Because that would affect the ISO rating to have a man stationed there.
I will find out how that employee's being paid. Before we execute the contract, we can actually break it back next month, or however that one of these that you just told us, you give us guidance.
Would it be something we would put in the contract? I mean, I'm not trying to rock the boat here on this thing.
You know, and I wish I had a better answer for that. I didn't realize this was just, I heard Mr. Wilson speak just now. I sent Chief Smith a message, sent a message, I think I was watching him yet, but Chief Smith thinks this is part of the contract price. We pay the Town of Central a lump-sum contract.
I know we pay him a lump-sum contract, but is there some sort of stipulation that, you know, we've got a new guy, that that's supposed to be a man stationed or not?
With this contract here, there's no clause.
There's no clause for it, but is it an understanding? Has the Rural Fire Department talked about this? The board? Has the board talked about this?
In that meeting, the chief said that the Rural District is paying for this position, and that's what he said.
But is it supposed to be a man stationed, is my question? Because that is an ISO question.
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion that we, since the contract doesn't take, doesn't go into effect until July.
There's no hurry.
Make a motion that we table this to the next meeting. I'll say it. Second by Councilman Bowles, is there any discussion on the motion?
We'll get you an answer responding to you. We'll also have the chief present next week to make sure that he can answer your questions.
Perfect.
And just for, and I know how things have worked, and you have agreements here and there, but if it's not on paper, then it's not worth anything, so.
We'll have the information for you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, tabling this to the next meeting? Signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. On to item number nine. This is a request from District Three, council member, for council to consider the Vineyards Fire District proposal to purchase a new fire truck from fund balance. You've all received some of the information here. Mr. Wilson, we have somebody that's going to speak?
Yes, sir. This right here, I think we got Mr. Rocky, I called him here, for Vineyards Fire Board. Rocky's here for Vineyards Fire Board. This request came through with Councilman Hendricks. Two staff, he asks for some ideas and options.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to present this. About a year ago, year and a half ago, as the county started to discuss possible consolidation of the fire departments and districts within the county, we had a concern that in doing that, how would we be able to maintain the high level of training within our fire department and keep equipment up to speed in order to maintain the recently recognized ISO 3 rating, which is very, you know, very low and very good and very helpful in our insurance rates? And in doing that, we'd made a presentation, and at that time, with all the change, possible changes going on, it didn't work. So, we went back to the table, and with the help of Wes, Gerald, Ralph, Scott, and Phil, a plan was devised that would benefit three fire departments in the county at the same time if council approves what we're talking about. In this proposal, to start off, the Vineyards would forego an estimated trade-in value of the engine to be replaced, that the department has, and that is valued at approximately $100,000. This engine, fully equipped, would be donated to Holly Springs. Holly Springs, in turn, would donate their engine to Rocky Bottom, which is in dire need, as I understand, of equipment. So, with this taking place, immediate improvement in the three fire districts would take place. This plan has been reviewed with the Emergency Planning Committee, and it fits with the possible consolidation of districts. They see no, any issues or things that would harm or change any of their plans going forward. The proposal also sets up a time gap between replacement of engines at the Vineyards based on years of service. Currently, when the fire department was set up, it started off with two brand-new engines. They are both obviously 15 years old now, and according to the National Fire Protection Group, they should be replaced. And so, instead of doing two, we would do one now, and then five years from now, when the other truck is 20 years old, possibly come back and ask for that, depending on what happens with the consolidation issue. So, that makes it more feasible for raising funds in the future. And then finally, both the Vineyards Fire Board and the Property Owners Association are in agreement with this proposal if the county chooses to approve it. Thank you. Take questions.
All right, excuse me, elaborate on the Property Owners Association. In the past, when you guys have made decisions to purchase this, that, or the other, the channels you're suggesting are the channels that you guys have done it in the past, correct? When the Property Owners Association is on board, you have that community's blessing to do those purchases, correct?
Through the POA, yes.
Okay. So, that means with this being said, with the property owners behind this purchase right here, they, the community is in favor of you guys getting that truck, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, they are in support of it.
Yes.
It's not an issue of just a few people want it, it's the community that wants it, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
So, I had a couple, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Go ahead.
The community wants this truck.
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of things. One, on consolidation, and if we consolidate, maintaining high levels of training concerns me that you say that. So, I don't know that we're consolidating. We've put a task force in place, we're looking at that. Doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Agreed.
So, I don't want to project anything out there that we've made decisions on anything. We're looking into all those things.
Okay.
And what makes the most sense that's right and fair by the people who live in Pickens County? How many people live in the Vineyards Fire District?
Roughly, there are 210, 20 rooftops and full-timers. Out of that, there's probably 110.
Two full-timers, you mean people who live there?
They're full-time and not have residence in other places.
Of those people, how many know about this proposal?
Of the full-timers, my guess is there's probably 15% that are aware of it.
15%?
Yes.
My concern is that we talked about this before. In order to be able to fund this, we're going to be extending that bond, which is going to be paid off shortly, right?
Four years, yes.
Right, I mean, but we're going to be extending the bond.
Correct.
So, in essence, there's an opportunity to lower the fees or taxes on those people. My concern was, we talked about this in our budget meeting, and I guess this isn't as much to you as it is to you guys. My concern is that we voted on this before not to do this because of doing the bond. I was hoping that you guys already had the money, like we had with other fire districts, and we can just go. to be extending that bond, which is going to be paid off shortly, right?
Four years, yes.
Right, I mean, but we're going to be extending the bond.
Correct.
So, in essence, there's an opportunity to lower the fees or taxes on those people. My concern was, we talked about this in our budget meeting, and I guess this isn't as much to you as it is to you guys, my concern is that we voted on this before not to do this because of doing the bond. I was hoping that you guys already had the money, like we had with other fire districts, and we can just go, you know what, you've already got the money, well, let's go with it. But getting into a new bond means, in essence, adding taxes on, not in addition to, but it's extending that tax burden further for those constituents. My concern is that only fifteen percent know of the full-timers.
Which is fifteen people.
Which is fifteen people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I would probably make a recommendation before we could consider something like this, is you guys have been, you guys have been great. The Fire Board up there is awesome, and you guys are, you've got your hands right on the, you're working with the people every day. And if I believe that the constituents there knew, over half of them knew, that this is what we're going to do, we're giving away a fire truck that's going to go to Holly Springs, and that's going to help them out, which in turn is going to help out Rocky Bottom, and we're going to be burdened with that tax for another four years, where we could drop it off, and we're okay with that, then I would be okay with it. But I'm concerned about the percentage of people who know and understand what's going on.
Okay. One comment, okay, I'm sorry.
But in the past, that's the same percentage of people as known when you bought the other trucks, correct? So this is nothing new, nothing different.
But when that happened, the community was, you know, just getting started and much smaller, so obviously, there had been more involvement at that time, yes. But one comment, if I can, I was at a gathering, my wife and I were there yesterday, in someone else's home, and it wasn't part of this fifteen percent that I shot out. I just, things got quiet, and I said, hey, here's a proposal that we're going to take to the county tomorrow night, give me your thoughts on it. And I took it, and out of the ten people there, everyone was in support, and I hit them with it cold. It wasn't a deal, and it was, so the community, the community is very, very supportive of our fire department, wanting to maintain the ISO rating, and anything we can do to help, we want to be able to do that.
So, are we in fear of not purchasing this truck, losing your ISO rating?
No, that doesn't come up for another five years.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, I am all about capital improvement plans, and I believe you have to plan growth, and you have to plan to replace equipment. I'm all for that. I think the biggest issue, which is the same issue the last time this came up for me, is while we have this other on the table, and we're looking at it county-wide, how are we going to make sure we can improve all of our equipment across the board, going in debt for a bond? If it wasn't a bond issue, I think it'd be totally different, but tying up a bond, because we'll be kept, we'll have to absorb that, that millage, that bond, if you will, is my concern.
That bond will pretty much almost be paid off if, and I stress that if, as huge as a football field, if we do go to county consolidation. If we don't, these guys are missing out. Who are we to tell them how to spend their money that they pay their own taxes, they're willing to pay their taxes? I was up there, met with them about fire coverage, and there was way more than fifteen people in that room, that's probably forty to fifty, I don't know if you remember that?
Yeah.
Every one of those residents in that room were all in favor of first-class, top-notch fire coverage. They did not blink an eye at the tax dollar on that when I was up there. They were all in favor of that. Them paying their taxes for that fire truck to keep their equipment top-notch, protect those high-dollar homes they have, saves them money on their insurance. It might cost them a little more upfront with their taxes, but on insurance, they save a whole lot more. And it's not our place to tell them that they're willing to pay that much tax dollars to buy that truck. It's not our place to say, no, you can't, you've got to drive a junky truck. It's not our place to tell them.
Do we have issues with their equipment? I mean, are they driving junky trucks?
Eventually, that's what it will be if we don't keep it up, up to grade, replacing it.
Counselor, first.
What is it that, Ralph's not here, I saw something in here, a lot of this documentation was literally, I saw it tonight for the first time.
Yes, sir.
Talking about reserve money?
Yes, sir, of course.
How much do they recommend that they have in reserve?
Our financial policy recommends between ten and fifteen percent on hand.
Which would be how much money?
Roughly ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. Ten percent is high. Now Ralph's will tell you fifteen percent.
All right, well, ten percent would work. Here's, and just, if you're trying to figure out how to get a truck, what the Vineyards is basically saying is that we got a truck worth a hundred thousand dollars. They could go out, sell that hundred thousand dollar truck, have a hundred thousand dollars, have their ten percent reserve, and go out and buy this thing. And by what we just said, we would have no problem with that. Am I right?
I have a question.
Now, what they're saying is that we're willing to give that hundred thousand to the county, to some other place in the county, so essentially, and this would be the question for the owners of the houses up there, is they're willing, are they willing to pay the taxes for a fire truck for another district? Because you got a truck, an asset worth a hundred thousand dollars. You could go out and get a hundred thousand dollars for it.
Could.
And we'd be sitting here with this same vote, and you go, we got a reserve, we can buy it in cash. And if no one was aboard, it could say no and not be consistent with it.
If you sold the truck, you still, if you kept your ten percent reserve, it wouldn't happen about two hundred and twenty, about a thousand dollars, used to be about two hundred thousand dollars, sure.
I thought you said to have a hundred thousand, I thought the reserve was only about...
They actually have, at the low point of the year, you know, I think the number you originally sent over was right at seven hundred something thousand. That's at the high, that's one of your higher points, that's the end of June, they got a payment off. At the low point of the year, which is November thirty, I think they had like two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand, yes.
In fund balance, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, at the low stage. See them?
Yeah, yeah, but here's the thing, they have a, a truck's going to cost how much?
Four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
All right, and they have...
Two hundred and twenty-two thousand at the low point.
And they got four eighty-five in there, so they got about fifty thousand dollars left over there.
Keep in mind, the four eighty-five is not at the low point of the year. Low point of the year is November thirty. Those numbers you're looking at right there was from June the thirty. Taxes come in, they start coming in December.
Understand, but operating through the year, the taxes are going to come in through the course of the year, depending on when you buy the truck. You can make all that work.
You could, we could, no, no, no. At your low point, which is November the thirty, there's two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the bank. If you spend all of your reserves, county's probably going to the front payroll for several months out of the year.
But if they bought the truck in July, they'd be fine.
January would be better.
I'm just, I'm just saying that you're just talking about a cash flow issue.
If you buy the truck in July, you won't have the two hundred and twenty-two in November.
Right, but you'd have all the taxes from all, from January through...
What you'd be doing is waiting on money to come in to pay.
In other words, you'd be getting your cash flow ahead of time and purchasing your truck at the back end.
Yes, sir.
I guess my point is, there's a way you could make it work.
You'll never make it work with cash flow.
I have a question about that.
I disagree. Now, maybe I'm misreading.
Yeah, yeah. Keep in mind, November the thirty is your low point of the year, you've got two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the bank. Now, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about operations, we're talking about bonds, dead millage, and they're talking about bond and the dead millage, is what they're talking about right now. Take all that off the table, let's not forget about the dead millage. Next year, the dead millage completely rolls off the books. That's six, seven mills.
Seven point two mills, yeah.
I told you off the top of my head, so I'm probably wrong. Dead millage rolls off. Low point of the year, you've got two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the bank. Dead millage is going away.
They sell the truck, they got a hundred thousand dollars more.
So they have three hundred and twenty-five thousand. If you want to keep your financial policy in place, which says you keep ten to fifteen percent of your operational budget as a reserve, if the roof flows off, you know...
What's the operational number?
It's right at nine hundred and, I'm telling you off the top of my head, so I don't have... Roughly, it's nine hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, ten percent of that's ninety thousand dollars. Now, it says between ten and fifteen percent. Now Ralph, he wants the full fifteen.
I understand.
I will tell you that. And I love savings again as much as the next one. Let's just say, what we thought the other day, what we talked about as possible saving, keeping a hundred thousand dollars on hand. That gives you a hundred thousand dollars at the end of November. You got a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars you can spend, plus the additional hundred thousand on the price of the truck, which is two hundred and twenty-two thousand, without raising any taxes. The only thing you have left is what you don't spend in your operational budget that this year. Since you come in ten thousand dollars under, you'd have two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
So the only way we're going to be able to do this is by reissuing the bond?
Yes, of, we even looked at the possibility, and Ralph's not here, so I'm kind of, you know, but we looked at the possibility of county loaning the money. Problem with that is they operate under a million system, Act 388 limits how much we can raise operationally, loan the money becomes operational, not debt. So...
What does it, what does it cost to do a bond like that?
You probably thirty, forty thousand dollars. And that's, we hadn't called upon attorney, we estimating thirty thousand.
How big is the bond?
It's going to be, well, right now, originally, we looked at...
Three, forty?
Yeah, three, forty. That's what they're looking at.
And the millage rate would drop for the four years from what we're currently paying on the current bond for the community.
But to buy the truck, you're going to have to borrow some money if you want to buy it. There's no way around it.
Mr. Keeler, would you like to say a word?
Thank you. My name is Jim Keeler. I'm a liaison with the Homeowners Association to our fire commission and council, which is why you see me hanging around here once in a while. I was president of our board for four years through the bankruptcy and served a total of six, so we've seen some sparks out there. I can assure you, sir, I spent a half hour this morning briefing the head of the POA and his primaries, his vice president, as to what this was, and I can assure you that the way that we operate out there is just like, you know, the people elect you to do certain things, as you see in your best judgment, if they didn't work out, they get rid of you next election. Well, it's the same with our election. We have a number of astute businessmen, as you can imagine, out there making these decisions. The thing that I'm a little shocked about is that the proposal that we made, when we said, when we heard about the district consolidation, is we want, we're not sure how this is going to affect us, but we want to make sure that we can do the training, buy the equipment on the right schedule, so that we don't have a ten-year-old over the peak fire truck, and if we can do that, we also want to, we, I mean, we drive down Shady Grove, we see all that pipe being pulled, and we know you've got a water problem, we know you've got a fire problem, and I told Wes, and I think we've told the committee, our second objective here was to help the county get better with their fire coverage. Well, for us to come back to you and say, yeah, we could sell this truck, or trade it in, and get a hundred grand, and, but whoops, you go back into our fund, we know, you know, we're not going to spend it, or you're not going to let us spend it, but if we backed off on the size truck and cost of the truck, and the community is saying, here is a chance for us to help Pickens County get better fire coverage out of three departments. The Vineyards will maintain its standard, Holly Springs gets a huge increase, and the poor guys out there at Rocky Bottom actually have wheels on their vehicle now. I mean, I can't believe that the council is not sucking this up and saying, this is a deal. And to the other concern about the millage and the bonds, we pay a higher, we're a special task district, or we're, we pay higher because we volunteer to pay higher to get the kind of training and equipment and service that we needed, and this thing's going to get paid off with the time. I think you're on the record, Mr. Chairman, as saying this is going to take a year of process to get the consolidation done. It's going to be paid off way before then, so there's no problem there. I don't know what else to say other than I'm a little stunned.
Let me, I'll just speak for myself. My trepidation is that, that's why I asked the question of how many people know about this.
Yes.
And I get what you're saying, you're elected to do whatever, just as we are, but most of the time, when we're, even though we're elected, I try to make choices based on what many people like in within my district to know what's going on. And you're telling me that fifteen people know and are excited about it? Not you, that's what...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how many people know.
Right, so...
But our board knows, and our board's supportive, and the board is the board. And they make the decisions for the whole community.
All right. That's a good point. And to your other point, I do, I do understand what you're saying, but it's a magnanimous offer to be able to help with Holly Springs and then Rocky Bottom. Do you have any other questions?
I have a question. Thank you, gentlemen.
On the bond, does the fire district pay off the bond, or does the whole county pay off that bond?
The fire district would pay off the bond.
Unless there is some other system implemented in the next four years, and then the county would have to absorb that bond.
Which would be a minimal amount at that time.
Whatever we negotiate, the time we do that.
We've got a community willing to do this, who are we to tell them they can't do it?
Well, that is my question. I understand what you're saying. We've got a community willing to do this, a community of fifteen people.
All right, here, I got a question for Roy. All right, look at number ten. How many people in Pickens County know that we're going over number ten right here? You think fifteen percent of Pickens County know that issue number ten on our agenda, you think fifteen percent of our county knows?
I'm not concerned about the issue that's talked about. What I'm concerned about is people knowing, Councilman Hendricks, I'm talking about people knowing that they're going to pay more in taxes than they are expected to. Let me finish what I'm saying, please. That they're going to be paying more in taxes than they would necessarily have to, to maintain the exact same level of service. But the argument's made that the level of services could somewhat diminish over the course of time. The other argument that I like is made that they're giving up something to give back to the county, and as long as we allow them to go into this indebtedness, my, again, my trepidation is, I don't believe these people who have made substantial amounts of money, or have made substantial amounts of money because they've not been frugal with what they spend. I don't think they just got money and they go, oh, we want to spend it, we're just ready to go. I just want to make sure that they know. If they're, if they're on board with it, who am I, you're right, who am I to say if a community wants to do it? I'd be, I'm all for it.
Your taxes are not going up, that's going to be the same, maybe even one mill less.
Can I, can I make a point? Sounds to me like all the council is looking at is saying, we want to make sure that the people are on board, or people living in this community are on board with what you're doing.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And that, and that if they're on board, they're willing to do that, we're happy to accept the gracious offer of the truck for this county. Is there a way to do that and go, and go take a polling of the people and say, here's what we're doing, and just have people, you know, say, yeah, we agree with this, and maybe that would solve some of the concerns of some of the people on the board.
Like a petition?
A petition to say...
What percentage are we looking at? I mean, people travel, I mean, at this time, they're traveling.
Well, you've got a hundred people up there that live full-time.
Full-time, yeah.
You know?
They're not all there right now.
I understand. What do you want in purchase this truck?
Ask again?
When are you wanting to make this purchase?
Well, it's fifteen, and so obviously, as soon as possible, then we can get it.
When does your bond roll off, the one that's current?
April.
So it won't be before April, right? You can't issue a new bond before April without raising taxes?
I understand it takes, from when you order a truck to get one, it's a year's, it's a year's...
Right, I'm talking about the actual bond, though. You can't do one before April.
We actually, we wouldn't get it on that. It takes years for the ordinance, we started today, several months out, on the ordinance and so forth, we issue a bond.
Can I, can I make a motion that we move this to committee? You work up the details of the bond, we're going to know the cost of the bond, what it's going to cost, and then you guys work up from your, the residents up there, you show, hey, these people that we went to them, and they said, and they want to come to the committee meeting and say, hey, here's the list of people, say, we're willing to do this, and then we can look at more exact numbers, because it's the first time I've seen any of these numbers tonight, and we can have a solid look at it from that point, and seeing that your people support, we can see what the cost is going to be.
You can just help draft a petition for them?
Oh, I'll second your motion with the amendment that we allow the administrator and his staff to help, I guess I need to second your motion first, right? Now, I'd like to amend your motion to add that the administrator and his staff help with the petition for them, and also make sure there's no state legalities and formalities of petitions, because I feel like there is.
I'm good with it. Does that satisfy your... Does that, does that satisfy your...
Can you...
So if he accepts that, that's fine.
I accept that, I accept the amendment.
All right, there's a motion and, and a second on the table, is there any discussion?
Will that, will that, does that make sense to you?
God, we'll work at it. I mean, it's not gonna be a problem.
This, this, this in essence moves us forward, um, and I, I think gets more people on board, stays within your timeframe to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
So what you guys are saying, if they come back with enough signatures, you will support this community getting the truck that they're willing to pay for.
Sure.
I sense that their concern is they want to make sure that everyone's on board, because it is gonna be an increase in taxes.
This, the taxes they decide.
When the bond rolls off...
When the bond rolls off, it'll be...
It's at this level.
They...
At a reduced mill rate.
Right.
Any other discussion?
Y'all good with it?
I mean, I, we don't have a choice, we want a truck.
But if the majority of the people up there, if they're good with it, shouldn't be a problem.
It's not gonna be a problem, sir.
Okay, well, and, and I'm good with it under those circumstances.
Absolutely, y'all get to choose.
We'll have to organize a community meeting and see, you know, we'll work at it. I mean, we should have something done by next month, I guess is what you're asking.
You think it could? And like, for the ones that aren't there, is it possible to get email confirmation from them?
Well, with email, though, you don't have it, I mean, we need to have a, a, a meeting and bring them in and talk about it and answer the questions that they may or may not have, that they have, and then, then have them sign the paper, and I, I guess you're gonna help us draw up what language or something, if you want.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and we'll go from there. But I don't know, it won't be 100%, I guarantee you that.
Well, not 100%.
Greater than 50.
Well, hopefully, if they're there and they come to the meeting, and they'll know what it's about, I mean, as, as, as you shared, when you came up and talked to them, the room was full, and, and people will support it. People will support it.
Any other questions? All those in favor of, of the motion as presented, please raise your hand. And motion carries. Thank you very much, and I really do appreciate y'all's desire to, to do what you're wanting to do, and, um, I'm hopeful that we can get this thing moving forward.
Love being in Pickens County, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, your honor. All right, moving on to item number 10. This is first reading entitled only of an ordinance to develop a jointly owned and operated industrial park, um, business park in conjunction with Oconee County, such industrial businesses parked to be at the time of its initial development geographically located in Pickens County, and to include certain property now, or to be owned by a company known to the county at this time as Project Jack or its assignee, and established pursuant to section 4-1-170 of the South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, as amended. Also to provide for a written agreement with Oconee County, providing for the expenses of the park, percentage of revenue allocation, and the distribution of fees in lieu of ad ver lorm taxes, to specify the distribution of fee in lieu of ad ver lorm property tax revenue in connection with such part to taxing entities within the county. Also to authorize the execution and delivery of a reimbursement and infrastructure credit agreement by and between the county and the company, and also to authorize the execution and delivery of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the county and the city of Liberty, and other matters related thereto. Ask for a motion in the second to constitute this first reading entitled only.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowers.
Second.
Second by Councilman Feimster. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Um, item 11. This is a second reading of an ordinance to amend Article 3 and Article 4 of the Pickens County Code of Ordinants related to multifamily dwellings. Uh, this has been given to us as a recommendation from the planning commission. Ask for a motion in the second to constitute second reading of ordinance 562.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Feimster.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Bowers. Discussion.
Um, I actually have had several thoughts and, and read over and, and some concerns. While I understand and, and I'm well aware, um, I would like to make a motion that, I understand times of the essence, I'd like to make the motion that, um, we either move this to committee or some, some other format, so we can have a little more detailed discussion in on this.
I would second that.
All right, motion to move to committee, a second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion on this?
Is this, is this, Chris, the planning committee has been working on this and come up with what we had discussed?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and you just want to clarify some discussions on in particular things, or?
Yeah, um, and I, I can, yeah, uh, one of the big things is the, and I, I guess I can, one of my big things is where the numbers come from, and I know we've got numbers from, from other areas. I've got some concerns over that. I'm not ready to really side one way or the other, but I'm having a little heartburn, if that makes sense. And, um, I mean, if Chris is, is available to answer, I'll re, pull my motion back to move it to committee, but, um, but I know that when we were talking about specific numbers, um, that's where my...
It's just the same numbers we talked about?
It is, it is. And, and where those numbers came from, and I know they're not arbitrary, but what is, I guess it's a risk reward is where, where I'm weighing, and that's where I'm stuck, if that makes sense. While I understand in this area, or that area, or another area, it may work, but other areas, it may not work, um, I know there's gotta be something I'm missing, if that makes any sense at all.
I think one of the, what we were looking at was that you're talking about the project density.
Yeah.
And, and that's your concern, and, um...
Where the original number came from, um, before the language was changed, where, where the original number came from, why that original number was what it was, um, you know, when we look at what municipalities have in place, why those numbers are what they are. So, um, if you'd like me to pull my motion back, Mr. Chair, and I'll let Chris try to answer, that's fine, if, if he's prepared to not.
Well, we'll leave the motion in place in a second and, and discussion.
Yeah.
He can continue. Mr. Brink.
So, Mr. Bat, the, the question regarding the original number, what we have on the books today would be the original number, was that? Where that number came from, that is our max density that we've always had in Pickens County. Um, and so that was carried over, you know, we, we amended the multifamily housing section two years ago, uh, to increase that number from, from four to eight. Eight recognizing that that's the max dense that we allow any development in the county and other sections of the ordinance, mainly for single-family and townhouse development. So it was carried over to multifamily. Uh, we looked further with this amendment to even increasing that, that number more, uh, only in areas where it's, where there's service provided, sewer mainly, to support that dense development, which is what most of our neighbors tie their density to, is the provision of sewer, of course. Just for instance, Sea of Easely is at 19 units per acre. We're recommending 16 units per acre. Greenville's 20, Greenville County's 20. Clemson varies between 16 and 20, depending on where in the city it is. So we're in line with what our neighbors are doing, uh, but we're still under that threshold, recognizing that, that this is far beyond what we've ever done in Pickens County from a density standpoint.
So, just clarification, because that actually, you may have just saved me a lot of headache and heartburn that I had. We're under what City of Easely, we're under most of what City of Clemson, we're under what, what Greenville is.
Correct.
So at 16, I don't know why I thought in my head we were gonna be significantly over...
We're significantly over what we've ever provided and before in the past, knowing that Pickens County develops differently than our cities.
Correct. We've got a caveat in there that ties this to these falling highways.
And public sewer and public water.
They're limited to the max service.
We want to make sure that someone doesn't walk out and drop in the middle of the county and go, I'm gonna stick this here.
Right, right. You, you have to have...
And so it's really only a couple places this could possibly go.
It's pretty limited.
Well, we, we've got a project right now, if it goes in, Highway 183 would be a four-lane highway, and, uh...
Won't be divided, though.
There's no sewer up there.
And it won't be divided. Say it don't meet the, the sewer or the divided road, caveat, so...
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'll pull my motion back, Mr. Chairman.
What is, have, do you have numbers on crime associated with the high density?
I, not, not, not right here. That'd be something easy to, to pull up.
There's no question, it's gonna be a, that larger footprint's gonna be, um, added with law enforcement, with...
Absolutely.
All emergency services. Uh, you have a three-story building that's gonna require fire department service in that area to have ladder trucks. It, it's gonna add some, it's gonna add some cost on, as far as, as our emergency services go. And I believe you pointed that out initially.
And, and we had that discussion at the planning commission as well. I, you know, spoke to you before, you guys before, there's a comfort level even with me, and this really approaches that comfort level from a planning director's standpoint, by, by the feel or, or level of service that we can provide. 16 is about as, as dense as, as we as a county, um, need to go to.
I guess one of my other concerns are, um, not five years after the apartment complex goes in, but 15 or 20 years. Does it become, the, and, you know, I guess that would depend on what the company, who company it was and what their track record. I just don't want to approve something that's gonna allow a high density of people and have a slum-type building in the, in a rural county.
Right. It, that's, that's a risk with any development. You just don't know, you know, what, in five years, 10 years, what that development's gonna turn out to be.
Mr. Brink, if I could ask, um, no more than four dwelling units per floor, that's the old language, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, um, and then going to eight units per floor may be included with a single builder structure and the above exception. So what is our neighboring areas, City of Easely, Sea of Clemson, Greenville?
They're across, it's, it's apples and oranges. They, they, they cap building heights per zoning district, so it's really, we really can't compare, but we increase the number of units per floor to get the buildings lower. So the density can still be met, but the buildings are lower, which helps with fire services. So at four units per acre, you, they were gonna pose three or four-story buildings. You increase the footprint of the building, allow more units per floor, the size of the building comes down.
I understand, so that they achieve the same 16 units per acre, they just may have to go higher and stuff?
The footprint's bigger, but the building's shorter.
Understood.
Which is actually safer.
In theory.
But, but this ordinance change, or this would, this change is in line with what's currently happening in other areas, in the municipalities of the county?
That's correct.
Okay, I got a little less heartburn, I appreciate that.
Okay, so here's where we are. You have the motion to move to committee, you are asking to pull that back.
I am.
Who seconded?
Councilman Hudson.
Pull it back too? All right, so now we're back to our second reading of the ord, this is the only second reading, we've still got one more reading after this, which will happen, I guess, in February. Um, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the second reading of the ordinance to amend Article 3, Article 3 and Article 4 of the Pickens County Code of Ordinants related multifamily dwellings per the planning commission recommendation, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brink.
Thank you for being prepared.
Yeah.
Yeah, that helps a lot.
Those are your genuine concerns.
On to item number 12. This is public hearing in third reading of an ordinance, authorizing the conveyance of Georges Creek, Creighton Creek sewer infrastructure and allocated capacity to the commission of public work, City of Easely, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto. I will now call us into our, our public hearing. Does anybody have any comments they would like to make about this? Seeing none, I will close our public hearing, and I'll ask for a motion in the second to constitute the third reading of ordinance number 561.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Bowers. Second by Councilman Feimster. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. And 13, um, on the consent agenda, we have Sasquatch Mountain overlook. Um, ask for a motion in the second that we approve the consent agenda item as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Bowers. Second by Councilman Hudson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Um, next, we're gonna go into, uh, our executive session, so I'll ask for a motion in the second that we enter, enter an executive session, executive session, I can't speak, for these reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Well, hold on, let me, I was trying to read the, the one that he, that we added.
Providence.
Oh, yes. Um, Project Providence, personnel of the Springs Fire Department, sorry, contractual issues, roads and bridges update, sale of property Quell Haven and Project Providence, boards and commissions, boards and commission vacancies for accommodations, tax, alcohol, drug, behavioral health, Appalachian Council of Government, assessments and appeals, beautification committee Bethlehem, water, construction board of appeals, cultural commission, Easely, Central Water, economic development alliance, five district boards for Central, Crosswell, Vakisville, Easely, Holly Springs, Liberty, Pickens, Pumpkin Town, Rocky Bottom, Shady Grave, Shady Grove, Six Mile Vineyards, GPATS, library board of directors, Pickens County grievance committee, Pickens, Oconee, Anderson Mental Health, planning commission, public service commission, Sedgewood Tax District, Six Mile Rural Waters, South Side Rural Water, Water Authority, tourism board, zoning appeals, and our nonprofit corporation boards of Hakenhill, Pickens County Museum, and Pickens County Performing Arts. So I need a motion in the second.
Motion to go after short recess.